Okay, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the North Andover Board of Selectmen from March 23rd, 2015. I am going to ask some very special guests tonight to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We're going to have Emma, Rose, and Elle Gordon, the daughters of our Selectman, Bill Gordon, to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. Erin, you can come on, Erin, you can come on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, girls. Thank you very much, girls. The reason we did that tonight is because of a very sad occasion. This is Mr. Gordon's last meeting as a member of our Board of Selectmen. He is not seeking reelection this year and has chosen to do other, more fun things and spend time with that beautiful family you just saw minus one, his oldest, no, oldest daughter?
Second oldest.
So his oldest daughter is not here tonight, she has dance class, but summer. So, thank you very much, girls. I have a, oh, let's get into the, I'll do this next. Let's do approval of minutes and we'll vote.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes from the February 24th meeting as written.
Second.
Oh, wait, actually, I apologize. We're amending the February 24th meeting. So I'm going to approve the 14th meeting as written. No, March 9th meeting minutes as written.
Thank you.
Okay.
Girls, you want to come up again?
So we're going to approve the March 9th meeting minutes as written.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We'll reconsider that last motion.
So now we're going to approve the February 24th meeting minutes as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I have, I'm going to start out with one communication from our Selectman who's down and out tonight with a, as she calls it, the plague. So, I know she's very sick, I spoke to her, she could barely even talk, but she wanted me to read an email from her for you. "Selectman Gordon, please accept my apologies for being unable to be there this evening, but the plague seems to have taken hold. However, it is very important to me, especially on your last meeting night, that I send along to you my thanks. Thank you for all the time, effort, and energy that you have put forth over these last six years. You and your work on behalf of the town of North Andover has left a positive mark, one that you and your family can be very proud of." And that's true, girls, you can be. "I am personally very much enjoyed working with you through the years as well. I thank you for all your thoughtful debate of the issues and your patience with mine. Your presence at the table will be missed. Thank you again for your dedicated service to the town and the people of North Andover." Thank you, Bill. I don't think anything could be said better than that.
Thank you. Thank you, Tracy.
She's watching, so.
Hope you feel better soon, so.
Very nice.
I have some comments, but I'm going to save them for the end because I don't want to get emotional right now, so.
Okay. All right, you have your prerogative. We have a place for public comments. Stan's not here, so.
I'll make that.
Yeah, so we'll have plenty of time. Okay.
May I say something?
Absolutely.
Are we all going to say? I have to say it's been an absolute pleasure serving with your dad, who is always a gentleman. Sometimes the debate gets hot and sometimes we disagree, but he's always been a gentleman and just really, you've been a pleasure to work with.
Thank you very much.
And you've served your town well and your family, preparing them for a bright future here in North Andover, so thank you very much.
Just take a house, what the town has run during your six years. Who else, without you, would ask the questions?
Yeah, you guys, I mean, it's a team effort, so.
Yeah, but still, you played to the close detail, you really took your job seriously.
Thank you, Don.
That's very important.
Thank you.
And I'll just add, in over the last three years, I've really gotten to know you and you've acted, been a mentor to me on this board and really, really showed me how to behave and how to act on this board, so I really appreciate the time.
Thank you.
So, it's going to be missed.
Very good. I will miss you guys too, so let's just move into the meeting and go on.
All right. All right, communications and announcements. So we have two new staff members who aren't actually new, but have taken new roles in the town and enhanced roles, so we'd like to introduce them tonight. Kathy, would you like to come up and introduce them?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to introduce Kathleen Keenan, who is the Library Director of Stevens Memorial Library. Kathleen was formerly the Assistant Director of the Library for several years prior to taking over this position. So very happy to have Kathleen in this new role officially.
All right. I'm delighted to be able to stay longer at North Andover. We have a wonderful library, we have a wonderful town, we have great support from all sides. It's a town that really appreciates its library and that's something special. Not every town has quite the opportunities we have here, so I consider it a gift for me, too.
Thank you very much. And good luck in your new role. Certainly have a wonderful building that you're now the custodian of and looking after, so, and, thank you.
And also, we have Glenn Alt. Glenn was, is still currently, the Assistant Superintendent of the Water Treatment Plant, but as of March 30th, he will be the Superintendent of the Water Treatment Plant. Glenn is actually returning employee, so we're very grateful to have him come back. He was formerly an operator, he left, went to another community, and then realized the error of his ways, came back, and we were happy to have him. But Glenn Alt from the Water Treatment Plant.
Welcome back and good luck in your new role.
Thank you, and I'm thankful for this opportunity. It's 30 years of getting to where I'm at right now, so I appreciate the chance and thank you all for that.
All right. Thank you, thank you so much.
Your Gordon family has loved the place.
So, Mr. Chairman, the town has also hired a new information technology director. If you recall, Matt Killen left to take a similar position in the city of Salem, so Chris McClure will join us on April 6th and will attend the next Selectmen's meeting to introduce himself to the board.
All right. Look forward to that. Okay, next on the agenda, under Communications and Announcements, we are going to get an update from the Borderline Running Club on the progress of the July 4th road race. So, Chris, come on up.
Good evening. Chris Marshall, 314 Boston Street with the Borderline Running Club. Believe it or not, summertime is coming. We are well underway with planning for this year's 4th of July 5 and 10K road races. Kind of fitting that I'm here tonight, giving you the annual briefing on Selectman Gordon's, Gordon's, Gordon? Gordon's last evening. You know, really, if it wasn't for Bill, we wouldn't have had this race. I merely facilitated with my volunteers and group of people. We do so for the benefit of the Friends of the North Andover Senior Center. It was Bill's idea to get this race going again, and really, he's the reason why it's back up and running. It's been a success the last two years we've run it. We plan for another success this year. We will run it again on the 4th of July, which is a Saturday this year. As I mentioned, planning is well underway. Most of our vendors are under contract right now, at least the ones that are on the critical path. I'm working with U.S. Track and Field to ensure the event, and we'll have that wrapped up shortly. We received our sanction yesterday, which is the first part of the process to getting our insurance coverage. We'll be meeting with public safety officials in the coming months, and at that point, usually around May, I'll be back in front of the board with a more formal request with detailed plans and so forth. Probably be opening up online registration, I would say about a week from today. We're just about ready to open up registration. We have some work to do on our website to update some things, but then the system will be open and we'll be off and running. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any detailed background if you have any questions.
I have a correction for you, Chris. Chris is being too generous with me. You know, they're the ones that do all the work, the Borderline Running Club. The number of man-hours it takes to put these races on and organize and all is incredible, so I was smart enough to come to you, and you took the ball and ran with it, so, you know, I deserve no credit at all. You deserve all the credit for all the hard work that you and your wife and the whole Borderline Running Club does, so, and again, it's all for a good cause, so very much appreciated. I do have one question, I don't know if it, public knowledge yet, as far as the money raised, some of the places it's going, do you, are you able to share some of that information now, or?
I am. I am. The Borderline Running Club, all the proceeds from the race go directly to the Friends of the North Andover Senior Center. So over the past couple of years, that amounted to about $45,000. And the Friends of the North Andover Senior Center historically would then divert those funds to senior-type causes. And this year, they've decided to divert some of those funds over to the Festival Committee to help support the fireworks.
Wow.
The details on that are being worked out at the moment, and again, that's the Friends of the North Andover Senior Center that would be making that, I guess you would call it a sub-donation, to, I believe, the Festival Committee. There's some folks here that are kind of in the know on how that works, but it would be for the sole purpose of supporting the fireworks.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Kind of a natural fit, it seems like where the race is on the 4th of July and, you know.
We certainly felt that way and thought it was a good cause for the, you know, for the folks to support the race.
And the list of items that the Friends of the Seniors supported, the Senior Center is quite long, too. I mean, from helping offset some of the costs from senior transportation to providing food, some food into the Senior Center, so it's incredible how much that money goes into and what they, how much they benefit from it, so, thank you.
It is. You know, one of our goals when we're producing this race is to try to get the fixed costs of producing the race covered by sponsors. And then the folks that register for the race, that money over and above really feeds right into the charity. So in order to go out and secure sponsors, you know, you need to have an accurate, clear, and concise message on precisely where the money goes. And Senior Center and the Friends of the North Andover Senior Center have been kind enough to give me that data, and you're exactly right. A significant amount goes to subsidized transportation for the seniors. There's, as you know, there's a wide variety of assistance available to seniors through federal, state, and local programs. When that runs out and they've got nowhere else to go, they can go to the Senior Center. And, you know, these are things like cards, you know, market basket food cards, things of that nature. There's enrichment programs that they put on for educational opportunities for the seniors that get subsidized by this. There's a rather extensive software system that needs to be updated and upgraded and maintained. That's really important to the operation of the Senior Center. They track their clients, the activities that the clients get involved in. Funds go to support that, you know, direct mail to the seniors in town. It's, you know, if you can imagine, it's several thousand dollars to send out a piece of mail to every senior in town, and, you know, this helps support that. So, really a great cause, one that we really believe in. It's easy for us to accept, you know, the responsibility to do this because the cause is so great. And, you know, for the Friends to turn around and help out by sponsoring the fireworks, something that the community really enjoys, I think that's a wonderful gesture on their part, one we applaud, so.
And $45,000 over three years is just incredible.
Yeah, it's been a good.
Mr. LaFawn, we're going to open public.
Yeah, just as an aside, Peter LaFawn, 75, Green Street. I worked with the English Department last year to bring Michael McCormick, who wrote All Souls, an author of a good book on desegregation in Boston in the 60s, to North Andover High School, and Lawrence, they worked collaboratively. And I asked them for support, they did, they gave us a substantial donation, so they do reach outside of fireworks, they went to the school department, helped them out, helped the English Department specifically. They need that, it was a good program.
Thank you.
Good cause.
Any other questions from Mr. Marshall?
Okay.
Thank you, we'll see you in a couple, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update. Okay, any other communications and announcements? We have the Taste of North Andover coming up this Saturday on March 28th. I believe tickets are still available for that, or is it, tickets are still available for that? You can go to the North Andover Youth Center website to purchase tickets online. Great event, lots of great food, good company, auctions, everything you could want on a Saturday night. So, still, tickets are available. Anything else?
Playing the role of Joyce Bradshaw, we have an election coming up next Tuesday, so get out there and vote.
March 31st. Bulls open at 7:00, they close at 8:00, so get out there and vote.
Early enough.
Anybody else? Okay. All right, we'll move on to consent items. First on the list, Ray Siroyes from the North Andover Lions Club requests a waiver of the building permit fee to erect a tent for the Kelly Miller Circus on June 22nd, 2015.
She moved.
All in favor? Any discussion?
I'll just, so this year, we're just, the request is for the waiver because they're holding it at the airport.
Might be a waiver no matter what for the tent, but it's a good.
But either way, but we're not approving the location this year because it's not at the middle school, it's at the airport.
Correct.
As it was, I think, last year because of the rain.
Yes.
So it was good.
Okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, Youth and Recreation Services requests a waiver of the permit fees for the Spring Carnival on April 22nd through the 26th, 2015. I believe we have someone here to speak on that tonight. Mrs. Crouch?
Hi, Carrie Crouch, 31 Moody Street. First off, I'd like to thank you, Bill, very much for your service and also for your dad's service. I know exactly what my husband's feelings were on his last night after 12 years of being a Selectman. And it's kind of bittersweet, but I just wanted to let you know, thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Well, we're back again for our carnival, and there is snow that's on the site at 1600 Osgood Street, so we may be announcing that we'll be doing a snowman building contest come April 22nd. We're asking if you could possibly waive the permit fees for the carnival, which will be held on April the 22nd, 23rd, 24th, 25th, and 26th. This is school vacation week, so that's why you see that there is one more day added to it like it was last year. I am also requesting approval to place banners in town as well. And if any of you would like to come up and see how, Mr. Cushing, and this is Larry, runs his carnival, we'd really love to have you come up. It's really nice to see the Selectmen's faces up there. It is a very large fundraiser that we have for the programs during the summertime for the kids. Any questions?
We'll approve them.
Second. All those, any discussion?
No.
I hear a thing about banners.
I'll send a separate letter, Don.
You're fine.
Okay. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Rosemary, did you have another?
And also, thank you for all you do for this. This is, how many years now has the carnival been in?
This is 26 years with one year in between that we didn't have a carnival.
It's a long time.
Yeah.
And also, too, that's a great fundraiser.
It's raised a lot of money over the years.
Yeah, a lot of money.
Yes, we have.
A lot of kids benefited.
Hopefully, we'll continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, appointments. Mr. Manager. Oh, yeah, you're going to talk to them?
Sure. The Appointment Subcommittee met several candidates for a number of different vacancies on town boards. These are the recommendations from the Appointment Subcommittee, of which Rosemary and Bill are members of the Appointment Subcommittee, to the Community Preservation Committee, Albert Fowler. I don't know if you want to take them one at a time in terms of.
Let me make a motion. I'll move approval for the Board of Selectmen appoint Albert Fowler to the Community Preservation Committee for a term ending June 30th, 2015.
Mr. Boyd, second, Mrs. Stewart, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Recommend, move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Sandra L. Goldstein Savoy to the Youth and Recreation Council for a term ending June 30th, 2016.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. So just a point, the CPC term is going to end this June. Okay, so it's finishing off someone else's term.
Yes.
Last one, move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Andrew Furman to the Youth and Recreation Council for a term ending June 30th, 2017.
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Alejandro Zayas to the Festival Committee for a term ending June 30th, 2015.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And Rosemary, I'll tell you a thunder, thank you all for your service, but you can say it too, I know you would. Thank you for your service to the town, it's very much appreciated. Okay, next, the signing of the March 31st, 2015 Town Election Warrant. Do we need a motion on that?
Yes, there should be a motion from Selectman Gordon.
Move that the Board vote to approve and sign the purchase, oh, that's the wrong one. Where's this? That's the purchase and sale agreement. Oh, there we go. Move that the Board, I'm, you know, I'm focused tonight.
You took six years to start a race.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve and sign the March 31st, 2015 Town Election Warrant.
All in favor?
Aye. I'm all ready for the purchase and sale agreement. Mr. Chair.
Okay, next on the agenda is to approve and sign the purchase and sale agreement and the conservation restriction for Academy Road parcels. I believe this is one that was approved at town meeting last year.
Yeah, so this was approved at town meeting as part of the Community Preservation Committee's recommendation, and these are the required documents and motions to make sure that we place the purchase and sale agreement and conservation restriction on the parcels in the Academy Road area. Both the motion and the documents that have been approved by Town Council.
Move that the Board vote to approve and sign the purchase and sale agreement between the Senate Realty Trust and the town, and approve and sign the conservation restriction from the Senate Realty Trust to the town of North Andover, acting by and through its Conservation Commission, for the purchase of a conservation restriction on property on Academy Road as described in the conservation restriction, for the sum of $570,000, and vote to authorize the town manager to sign any documents necessary for the conservation restriction to be acquired by the town pursuant to the vote on Article 24 of the 2014 Annual Town Meeting.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, affordable housing. Unit resale for Harvest Drive, Unit 222, we have the right of first refusal of that unit.
Move that the Board of Selectmen decline the right of first refusal to purchase the affordable housing unit at For Harvest Drive, Unit 222, Oakwood Village, Maplewood Reserve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So that is a pretty standard procedure that we usually always do, decline that right of first refusal.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, set fee for mobile truck licenses.
So, Mr. Chairman, you may recall last year, the Board set, set of regulations for mobile truck licenses throughout the community. As part of that, incorporated within the regulation is a requirement for a fee. Last year, you went through the process and accepted the regulations, but never assigned a fee. We couldn't tell from the minutes, quite frankly, in the tape, whether the intention was that there be no fee, or it just hadn't been acted on, so we wanted to make sure that we were on the record relative to that. We have included as part of the information in your packets, copies of other fees that are associated with obtaining a mobile food license. So for example, if you needed the truck reviewed by a health department to make sure that you could service the community, there is a fee associated with that. But there is a separate fee within the regulations themselves, and at this point, the way the regulation reads is a fee of, and then there's a line. So, we're trying to get some direction from the Board of whether or not you would like to set a fee, and if not, then to vote there be no fee, and in the absence of that, make a recommendation of some fees so we can make sure that the regulations properly identify the intent of the Board.
So this will be an annual fee?
Yes.
There is an annual health, Board of Health fee?
To be inspected. For the vehicles to be inspected in order to operate the community, that's done every year, yes.
Does it already have a Board of Health fee?
Yes, when you inspect the vehicles, they have a Board of Health fee, but that's separately, separate from the regulations. So as you read the regulations today, the problem with the regulations today is that there's no fee identified. So we can either strike the language that there be no fee, that'd be an option to the Board as well, but as they're currently formulated, there would be a requirement that there be some fee, even if the fee were zero.
And, let's say, there's a list of scheduled fees here, common victual license, entertainment, one-day alcohol, one-day mout wine and malt, automatic amusement, so forth. What's that?
It's quite the track.
So, if it was a brick-and-mortar establishment that serve cupcakes or served sandwiches or whatever.
Victualist license.
They would be, they would have to pay the Board of Health fee.
Yes.
And the victualist license.
Yes.
Correct?
Well, the Board of Health fee, in that case, is a victualist license. There might be an additional inspection if they served milk as an example, so we didn't give you a comprehensive list of all the fees. But they certainly would like, they would likely need a common victualist license.
And that wouldn't cover the Board of Health fee?
That's what I'm saying.
That's, the victualist license is issued by this Board as a process of having, what we provided you with is not a comprehensive list, but an example or a set of the entertainment and other licenses issued by this Board and the fees associated with those, so.
Is there a common victual license for a store right now?
Food. What is that, $100?
$100. So if a brick-and-mortar sold sandwiches and a mobile food truck sold sandwiches, they both would have to pay, well, right now, the brick-and-mortar would have to pay a common victual license.
Yes.
Would they also have to then pay a license to the Board of Health because they had to be inspected?
It could vary, so, A, to be somewhat obscure about it, but we didn't give you a comprehensive list, so it depends on the nature of the business.
But then.
So for instance, if there was a scale, there would be a fee associated with that. If there were liquor, because if liquor is linked to the victual, it would be associated with that. If there was, I believe, if there's milk, there's another permit associated with that, so. Is the goal to try to make them comparable?
Not to give one advantage over the other.
Victual is probably the best example.
So let's just say a restaurant or a pizza store that doesn't sell alcohol, serves pizza, sandwiches, and beverages outside of milk.
Yep, another victualist license.
Victualist, so that would be the $100 fee.
And they would also have a Board of Health license, or a Board of Health inspection fee. They sell chocolate milk.
Likely. I just, we're using some examples here, which I want to make sure you're at least basing it on the same thing.
Well, the volume for a food truck wouldn't be as high as a regular common victuals, would it?
It depends on the business.
It depends.
Well, definitely, we wouldn't charge more than $100.
The difference that, because, the reason I'm avoiding the language.
No.
My inclination would be to go with $100. The same as the common victual license, because basically, that's what it is.
$99 sounds better.
What?
$99 sounds better.
The reason I'm avoiding the language that you're making relative to the health fee is that when you have a mobile food truck, it needs a separate licensing requirement.
No matter what this.
It gets inspected, right. So if an ice cream truck comes into the community, before it can, before it's allowed to sell ice cream in the community, it needs to be inspected, and that has a fee associated with that health inspection. So there is a difference between a bricks-and-mortar facility and a mobile facility.
Where's it, an ice cream store in town, they're not subject to that same inspection?
They're different inspections, so a mobile food truck has to be inspected in one way for certain criteria under the health regs, and a bricks and mortar store may be different.
But yearly, is the brick and mortar ice cream store inspected by the Board of Health and then charged a fee?
Yes. Well, they have a victualist license, and the victualist license, again, there are some differences between, it's not perfectly analogous between the two, because when you have a portable facility, they're inspected under different health regulations. But there is no common victualist currently within the portable, that I'm aware of. Were there any differences between those? Victualist is not common. So they're inspected, but they're inspected for health reasons to make sure that the vehicle meets certain health codes, as would the rest of our restaurants be inspected.
Right.
But...
But the nature of the inspections are different.
So what I'm gathering, the Board seems to be deciding what seems to be fair and reasonable, and treat all facilities fairly.
We don't want necessarily, I don't want necessarily have to double dip...
It's not the money, it's clearly not the money.
Double dip on a, on a mobile food truck, you know, charging two licenses, if, two fees, if a similar brick and mortar is only charged one. That's what I get, I'm getting mad.
Well, a victual has seating, so, so in facilities that have seating, you're going to have a victualist license, you won't have seating in a mobile food truck. So it's, it will be, there are differences.
But the mobile food truck, by our regulation, requires to have that?
Yes.
And that is a hundred dollar fee?
The inspection of the mobile food?
Yeah.
I don't know, I did not include that, I did not check into it, the inspection is for the mobile food truck.
Do we need to decide on this this evening? Can you?
Okay, it's my last night, I gotta do something.
For the fee we're gonna assess, for the application and the issuance of a license to do, to have a food truck, so the bylaw that we placed in last year, or somewhere along last year, I think. Yeah, so this is a fee associated with that particular license. And I think what I'm hearing you say, Bill, is we'd like to make that equitable with brick and mortars, but we don't want to charge them, so we don't want to have a fee that's going to be, let's say it's a fifty dollar fee now for their inspection, we don't want to tack on another hundred dollar fee on that, we want to kind of make it equitable, right? So we want to try to level set it at a similar license that a common victual would like around a hundred dollars. Is that what you're thinking?
Yes, what I'm thinking, I think what I'm getting is the idea of double dipping, or charging two fees where if a brick and mortar is doing the same thing, is not being charged that because it's being covered by their common victual license, then, then at the same time, if I'm hearing you correctly, that irregardless, the mobile food vehicle is going to be inspected by the Board of Health and charged a fee, then I would be inclined to let them slide on the licensing fee, because it sounds like they're already being charged one fee, that, and really, right now, our mobile food, you know, license is capped at four. So, you know, to Rosemary's point, it's, you know, if you said it, it's four hundred dollars, so it's not the money, it's the principle of charging them a fee when we're already charging them another fee.
Okay, so I would like to find out if we could, what that other fee is, and then, because I think we should at least be, they should be paying the same as a brick and mortar, in my opinion, a common victual license, so if we have to assess a fee for the permit to get to that point, or at least, let's see what it is.
Yeah, I think we have to look at a little...
Did you give a chance to look up the fee on this?
Yeah, which one are you looking for?
The inspection of the mobile food vehicle.
If it's onsite prep, it's one forty, if it's, if there's no onsite prep, it's ninety-five.
So if they bring food into the community without preparing it in the vehicle, it's ninety-five. If they prepare food in the vehicle, then it's one forty.
It's really hard to, it's difficult, because you could make the argument, well, the brick and mortar, they're paying real estate taxes, or whatever, whereas they're paying an excise tax, I mean, we could really, you could really start, you know...
One of the reasons why we didn't provide you, is we didn't see them as, we could have been wrong in terms of your assessment of it, but we didn't see them as necessarily analogous to bricks and mortar, because you can have, for instance, if you have speakers piping in music to your small restaurant, you're paying an entertainment license.
But they could also have a...
But we don't have that if there's music playing from a mobile food vehicle, so...
Did we say they cannot have music? Was that, but they could...
That's within the permit.
Ice cream trucks play music, right?
That's what I mean, so it...
What's the ice cream truck?
Well, the ice cream trucks are not in this particular regulation.
Right, right. That was exempt from that other licensing.
So there's another analogy, we have an ice cream truck, and/or a canteen truck is exempted from the statute. So the canteen truck, which wouldn't fall under the regulations, they fall under state statute, then we have ice cream trucks, which are regulated in a different fashion, and this particular regulation, which was adopted for the mobile food truck, is separate from how we treat ice cream trucks and how we treat canteen trucks.
So it sounds like we're already charging them a fee of close to a hundred dollars, or a hundred and forty dollars for...
Thirty-five is probably the more common. Well, we probably have mixed bag, I think we've had, we've had one down here that is preparing food, so that would be one forty-five, and, yes, somewhere near...
So is there any portion of the cost for preparing that license, any administrative costs or anything like that, that we need to cover?
Yes, that's why you have a fee. Can't technically have a fee without a cost.
Right.
So I'm gonna answer yes.
So what is that cost?
You're gonna ask me that question, aren't you?
Yeah.
Can I identify the cost associated with that? It's the cost associated with administering a policy.
Okay.
If the Board wants to decide on this tonight, I, I'd be okay with making a motion, otherwise, if you want to think on it, then I won't make a motion. If I make a...
Make a motion, let's hear it, see what you say.
So I would make a motion to, I don't know what the correct term is, waive or eliminate the fee associated with the license, because they're already paying the Board of Health inspection fees.
So I'd recommend if you could amend that to be, set the fee at zero.
Set the fee at zero.
Well, that was my, right, because if you, if you, if we for some, find a reason that it isn't equitable, we don't want to now just, so, fee zero counts, it's not fee one dollar? It has to, zero, sure, zero's fine.
And that can always be revisited if we find, but although, we've got a cap at four, so it's never really going to be a major influx of vehicles coming in, and a major administrative overhead for that. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion?
As amended by the Town Manager.
Oh, so that's zero. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
A lot of talk for a zero fee.
Well, we had to understand what we're level setting.
It's privately administered, of course.
It's privately administered, of course, right. Okay, next on the agenda is to open up the annual town warrant. So do I need a motion to open the warrant?
So I'm gonna move that the Board of Selectmen reopen the 2015 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, so...
We're gonna take, if I can, we're gonna take three steps, so, as has been the practice, you close the warrant to citizen petitions at the last meeting, provided a draft of the warrant to the Chair, the Chair has ordered the warrant, which has been the practice in terms of the sequence. What you have before you is a draft of the town meeting warrant, probably eighty-five, ninety percent draft of the town meeting warrant, ordered with the approval of the Chair, so we're gonna open the warrant, accept it as presented, if you approve, then you would close the warrant. So, open the warrant, accept it as presented, close the warrant, it takes three steps to do that. We're likely to come back with some amendments if we get Town Council feedback, or some land use board feedback, planning and zoning between now and the next meeting, whenever that is, and ask you to do this one more time, but this represents eighty-five, ninety percent of the warrant as we know it today.
So I'll move that the Board of Selectmen reopen the 2015 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, warrant is open. So, next will be to accept the warrant, as ordered as, or as ordered?
Yes, or unless we want to change.
Unless we want to change it.
Move that the Board of Selectmen accept the 2015 Annual Town Meeting Warrant as presented.
So, as a way of discussion, I'll just make a comment, so, I did ask the Town Manager to move the citizen petitions to the back of the warrant, for, so that we would have more particip, I felt we'd have more participation through the meeting, if we had those petitions, which sometimes get the most people there to support them, and then we end up having a huge drain of people after those are completed. So I thought by moving them further into the, into the warrant, you know, we would have better participation throughout the meeting.
It's a good try, sometimes they'll get up and say, I'd like to move article number... Believe me, they know, they know how to do it.
I know that, I know.
Yeah, I think that's a, I don't have a problem with that.
All twenty-eight articles, they could just stick around for the hour and a half, it's gonna take to do town meeting.
So, any other comment, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Move that the Board of Selectmen close the 2015 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
One second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Good.
So Mr. Chairman, leading into item I on the agenda, with, between now and next meeting, obviously, the Board will have an opportunity to comment and or vote on the articles presented in the Town Meeting Warrant. At this point, due to some scheduling conflicts, we don't have the two citizen petitioners, so it suggested that, obviously, come the next meeting, I'm sure the Board would like to hear from them before making a decision. So we're recommending you take action on the general articles today, and then, obviously, we don't have the final numbers until we get Finance Committee response on the financial articles, but that should happen by early April, they're moving aggressively toward completing their role. And then we should, depending upon when that, when that next Selectmen's meeting is, we may have the land use response relative to the three zoning articles that are currently being proposed. So, I know we're splitting it up a little bit, but we're just making our way through the recommendation process, so at this meeting, we'd recommend that you take action relative to your opinions of the general articles, which appear at the beginning of the Town Meeting Warrant. Several of which, quite frankly, are annual articles, things like the extension of the contracts, and easements and the like.
So you would like us to vote on Articles one through eight right now?
Yes.
So I'm gonna move that the Board of Selectmen vote their recommendations on Articles one through eight. If it pleases the Board, I'm gonna say favorable action for all of them. But...
Second.
So that's reports of special committees, reports of receipts and expenditures, Article three, authorizing Town Manager or Superintendent of Schools regarding contracts in excess of three years, four, authorize and accept grants of easements, authorize, number five, authorize to grant easements, six, reserve easements for Safe Roots to School Project, amend general bylaws, Chapter forty-four, public meetings, is that the Finance Committee?
Yes.
And then Article eight, amend general bylaws, Chapter eighty-eight, dogs.
Yes, I can speak to any of those that the Board would like.
I'm just curious, why the vicious dogs to dangerous dog? What's the big deal with that?
The Attorney General had difficulty with vicious dogs, so they've become dangerous dogs.
Is that, is that in harmony with what the state law is?
Yes, Town Council recommended last year that we rewrite the dog bylaw, which we did a comprehensive rewrite that was supported by this Board and adopted by Town Meeting. We submitted that comprehensive rewrite to the Attorney General, the Attorney General modified that rewrite in a couple of places, none of which is substantive terms like vicious versus dangerous, and so we're now making modifications to the newly adopted dog bylaw based on recommendations of the Attorney General.
Would you rather have a vicious dog or a dangerous dog?
Well, vicious dog, you know is gonna bite you, a dangerous dog, maybe just one of those dogs sitting on the car smoking cigarettes. He's, he's the type of dog you don't want your little female dog running around with. No, I don't know the difference.
Article six, Mr. Town Manager, that was in our box tonight, maybe you could just talk about that?
Sure, as the Board may recall, may remember, the Board has approved Safe Roots to School Project, which is a, a one point six million dollar state-funded roadway and sidewalk improvement, pedestrian improvement project, connecting the area behind the middle school to the middle school. You may recall the Board's insistence that the curbing be granite was also adopted by the state and funded by the state. In order to do the work, Gene Willis came, I think, a couple of meetings ago and talked about the fact that we need to secure temporary easements on thirty-plus parcels to make sure that we can install the sidewalks. We've learned through the process that the easement, the standard easement language that's recommended by a Town Council on an annual basis doesn't cover the type of temporary easement that we'd be seeking to complete the work, so Town Council has offered this with assistance of the state in terms of the proper easements, to make sure we can temporarily secure access to the properties. We've met with the residents, it's all gone very well, but this is the language that they would seek adoption of to make sure that we could have those temporary easements while the work was being conducted. You'll notice that's one hundred and fifty words without punctuation.
I would never have noticed.
Thanks. I stand by my motion.
And everyone is adding the Finance Committee to the televised, and it's just adding the language and finance or finance.
Do you want to take that out of it?
I'd like that one to go.
Yeah, okay, so we're gonna, my motion's amended, it's gonna be Articles one through eight except, we're gonna vote on Article, how come I can't see it, Article seven individually, but, you know.
So the motion on the table is for Articles one through six and Article eight, for favorable recommendation for those. Do we have a second? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then we have, do we have a motion for Articles seven?
I'll move favorable action regarding Article seven.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have a second? Discussion on this?
No, other than I would, as I've stated earlier, that I would recommend that you allow the Board from year to year to decide on the Finance Committee. They've decided to, this, this particular Finance Committee, my understanding is they've decided to have it televised, and I would, again, recommend that they be allowed to choose, depending on the nature of what comes before them, so. So I will be a no vote.
All right, so would anybody like to amend the, based on it? No, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that was a three to one vote on that one. Okay, so Articles one through eight have been recommended for favorable action, and I think those are the only ones before us tonight, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll move on.
Motion to move the licensing...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Gordon will be the Chairman of the Licensing Commission this evening, in absence of Ms. Watson, Mr. Gordon has accepted the role of Licensing Chair.
Doing my best job to represent Tracy. The Licensing Chair, I'm gonna take over for tonight. So, what do we have before us?
Luckily, it's just one.
One day license.
One day license for the Joseph N. Herman Youth Center, request a one day all alcohol license at the Youth Center for the Taste of North Andover event to be held this Saturday, March twenty-eighth, 2015, 7:00 PM to 11:30 PM. What's that? Is it, Mr. Cap, what's that? Caporale, would you like to speak to this?
Jake Caporale, 336 Chestnut Street, I am on the Board of the Joseph N. Herman Youth Center, we have our annual event on March twenty-eighth, which has been very much supported by this group, and we're asking for the one day license, and also, given that we are a 501(c)(3) consideration, to waive the hundred dollar fee.
I would move approval, it's a fun event, we want to keep it a fun event, so I would recommend...
Tickets are still on sale, but going quickly, so we do always sell out, so we encourage you to participate. Thanks for your support.
I will second that motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just so that you know, Mr. Chairman, that the, I believe all of the Boards have written in favorable approval for this, please fire...
Yes, everything seemed to be in order, yep, exactly. Thank you, Mr. Valencourt. I would like to add this, I'm gonna have to miss this year, it's not because I'm no longer on the Board, I'm having surgery the day before, so I won't be able to dance or anything like that, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna be on the couch Saturday night.
And we saw you dancing every year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, have fun, and let's vote on this, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Motion, Smidili?
Second.
Second, Valencourt. Motion, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are now out of licensing. Okay. This is where it gets a little more serious.
It may never be the same.
Okay, so the next on the agenda is a public hearing for some work to be done by National Grid, so I will hear a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm gonna accuse myself from this first one.
You will be accused.
I want me to read the motion?
Go ahead and do opening, which one? Okay, so, just to be clear, this hearing, the first hearing is for a poll petition that has been submitted for Green and Middlesex Streets. There's three petitions, we'll have a separate hearing for each one, so this is for the first one. So, welcome...
National Grid Electric Engineering. The first one is gonna be Green Street? Is that the one? Okay. On Green Street, we are looking to install a stub hole across the street approximately 35 feet, and that is to reinforce for storm hardening, so that way there is a backyard construction running through the in-between two houses with primary electric, and that's to serve multiple houses about a quarter-mile down the street. And there's currently a brand-new pole there that's already leaning. There's already, there's two service drops servicing homes and also a primary span with telephone and also cable on that, and the pole is currently leaning in.
What pole's leaning?
Pole 184 in between 64 Green Street and 76.
So why don't you take it out, put a new one in?
We did. We need a stub pole, and that's why I'm here today.
On the same side of the street?
On the opposite side of the street, with a guy wire to hold it from coming back. So, and what we'd like to do as part of the storm hardening is put tree wire instead of open wire, instead of open conductor, which is heavier.
Why can't you secure it from the same side of the street?
Because our guy wire would now be in the street.
Why can't the pole be repaired so that it doesn't lean?
It's just, you know, it's just physics, the pole with the weight. There's nothing to back guy it on the other side, so with the weight of primary, that's actually, we tried to do that so it wouldn't lean, which is called slack spanning, the primary, so we're not making it really tight, and that has been done. But the also, the weight, a lot of the weight, too, comes from Verizon with their fiber optic, it's a very thick cable.
That's the problem.
And there's also Comcast on it as well, so that's the reason. There's nothing to keep that pole from toppling over, so that we have to have a back guy, which goes across the street to another pole with a guy on that to transfer the load. And there's two service drops currently powering two houses along with the primary service to service multiple homes through backyard construction. And that's...
So, 'cause I... You know, my neighborhood, I know the area. I drove through there today in preparation for this. So on one side of the street, you have a brand-new pole...
Correct.
...that's put in. It's double-pole now, there's a...
Yes.
I go to what imagine is the...
Which we do have to remove that double pole.
The old pole, okay?
Yes, I looked at that today.
So you have that, and it's a very tall, you know, brand-new-looking pole.
Yep.
And so if I understand what you're saying, that pole, and from what I see, that pole feeds an electrical wire, or wires, through people's backyards...
Correct.
...going perpendicular to the street.
Correct.
Correct?
Yep.
So, just the... And so that pole is relatively new?
Correct.
How old?
Yeah, it's relatively new, considering that a lot of poles are in the 1930s that are still standing.
So that new tall pole is six years old?
Yeah, approximately. I don't know, I don't have that information up here.
It's been doubled that long?
Yes, because the different attaches do have to come off of that. We can't remove the pole until different attaches are taken off, like Comcast, Verizon. On that pole, there's Comcast and Verizon other than us.
And then, six years. How long have... So it's unusual, I would imagine, that the electrical feeds go through people's backyards?
Yes. This is back, done back in the 40s and before I was even born, and this is...
So that pole's been there for a lot, I mean, the original pole before that's been there?
Original pole, no spots were there a long time.
Has it been there for quite a while? Has there ever been a guide wire across... I mean, 'cause what you're trying to do is put another pole on someone else's property across the street to counterweight?
Right. But back then, there wasn't fiber optics and all that stuff, making the pole keep going over, 'cause now we have, you know, all the different other communication lines on them as well.
See, I think that, you know, I think, at least for me, National Grid...
Correct.
I get kind of boiled up a little bit, because, you know, and just driving, around the library, I tell you, I saw eight double poles in the area. If this pole's been doubled since '6, for at least six years, you know, for me, I'm not in the mood to grant you any more poles or anything like that until you clear up, clean up what is existing. So I mean, it sounds like, you know, you do some work, then you don't finish it all. You leave a double pole, which, and this is all aesthetics, you know, what's... Is that the right word, aesthetics, how it looks, you know? You don't want to have to put another pole across the street on someone else's property with a guide wire, I imagine, going into their, in their, in their property, right?
Understandable, yep. I wouldn't want that in my property. But all that can be taken up, there's no attaches left on that one pole that we're talking about, the double pole.
But that's one of eight double poles, and this one is, that I, I just, five-minute ride here, and I saw eight.
Okay.
So, and this one has been there for the last six years. So there seems to be an issue getting rid of double poles.
Yes.
And I've been, you know, we've talked about this with National Grid before, you know, then the other issue, you know, is, is all the trees that come cutting down because of all the, you know, and it's not a, it's not a separate issue, it's a similar issue. It's, you know... So I mean, I think there needs to be a little bit of community awareness regarding that.
Yeah.
Taking down double poles, if you're gonna, you know, cut down a bunch of trees or not cut them down, but cut off all the limbs and leave a, like, an ugly little... There has to be some replantings and other things going on.
Yeah, that's understandable, definitely.
So...
There are things, though, there are...
And I know it's not you, I'm just conveying...
Fire alarms that, contractual, we cannot touch other parties, you know, we cannot touch a Verizon line, we cannot touch Comcast, we cannot touch the fire department.
You own the pole, right?
In North Andover, yes, correct. We do own the pole.
Do they pay you?
No, we cannot touch those items on those poles.
No, but do they pay you? Do they charge you?
Yes, Verizon buys into it and different things.
Okay, so you have some control over what they do. So you can tell Verizon or the slacky line, you know, or whatever technology you can use to make sure those poles don't tip, you can...
In this particular instance, there's nothing else that can be done.
So I have my pole here. So if you have a pole that's, you know, in the ground that deep, right, it's gonna have some... But can't you dig, put the pole in deeper to make it even more...
You could keep doing that, but it's still gonna keep going over. It depends if you have sand in that area, depends on what you have around that.
I have to think if you're anchored, it's like a...
But you think somebody wants to see a Class 1 pole that's about this big, you know?
Well, I'm just thinking of a regular pole. If you're just sinking in more, kind of like an iceberg, you know, the more it gets below the surface, the more stable it's gonna be.
Could do that, but depends on what's in the soil there that could go over. If you have soft sand with, 'cause of the tree, the wire that we want to replace that with for that backyard construction is storm hardening, because that feeder that we're actually trying to harden was one of the top 5% worst feeders in 2011. So, and as of now, in the last ice storms, everybody knows, the last blizzard, we didn't have many outages. And that's because of all that, because of all the tree trimming that we've done, because of all the storm hardening with better construction. This is to meet our new construction standards, which is supposed to have, this, everything's supposed to stand up in a sustained 40-mile wind with half an inch of ice. So, which, if this pole come, if a tree comes down on that pole line, it would take, it could theoretically, I don't know if it would happen, but it could take all that down, which if we have that guy wire there, it might just snap one spot, and maybe one person loses their lights instead of 10.
But isn't the issue the fact that you submit these requests, and I hear could be, maybe, should be, and I see none of the supporting engineering documentation? So where's the supporting engineering documentation?
Of supporting...
Well, you're making assumptions, and yet you haven't provided the Board with the supporting engine, you've referenced engineering, you've referenced physics, you've referenced guide wires, you've referenced, you know, what can happen, but you don't provide in the application for the Board the supporting engineering that shows the need to replace the pole. What's the depth of the pole? What's the topography of the area around the pole? What's the soil makeup below the pole? What's the construction? You've provided none of that, no structural information. So it's difficult for a Board to evaluate a request when you're adding a pole in a place where generally residents in any community, any neighborhood would want a pole, and it's based on information that's not exact science to that pole. How many outages have there been as a result of that pole consistent with the storms in the last twelve months?
3,369 on that feeder.
On that pole? Okay, well then provide the data. Have you provided the engineering, how that's gonna change? What's that number gonna become once you put it in?
We can provide it, too.
Well, I think it's helpful in the dialogue, 'cause right now you're making a recommendation without the supporting engineering of the need to change it.
Right.
I think that's helpful.
It sounds like, you know, we're trying to take an easy way out. Instead of investigating all the possibilities, maybe, maybe there is something we could do and, you know, sink in the pole a little deeper, maybe there's something else.
Right, right.
It sounds like, and I understand that company, you know, you wanna try to get out of it as cheap as possible, or as cost-effective.
At least cost-effectively.
Yeah. So maybe we could look into some other ways of...
Yeah, no, definitely, no, and I agree with you, you know. I mean, the other possibility is a larger pole could be put in with a thing called pole foam around it. That's something that could be done. I'm not the particular engineer on this job, but, I mean, I can talk to him. This is a standard procedure for the new standards for storm hardening, but, you know, I can, we can definitely go back and possibly do that, put a larger pole in there, you know.
Okay, I think, well, first of all, well, which of these... So they sent you in as the sacrificial lamb, huh? Not the engineer on this one.
Yeah. In fact, John Castro, and I believe he's been speaking with a person at 65 Green Street, he wasn't able to make it tonight, but I did speak with him today on the job, so...
So as a matter of process, do we open up for public comment at this point, or... Okay. So have you presented everything you want to present on this particular article?
Yes, yes, you know.
Okay. So we're gonna open it up, I think we have a few neighbors here to talk to this or for it or against it, but I'd like to give them an opportunity to get up and say their piece. I think you had your hand up in the back there. Do you want to come up, Dave?
Yeah. Logan, 76 Green Street. You had a poor unfortunate soul that didn't come here and present.
That's okay.
So, yeah, this area, so we had the polar, no, we had the, I can't remember what the storm was called, but basically, six years ago, it snapped the first pole, and probably what should've came is the pole should've been pulled out, and then they, but at the time, we were out of power for probably 18 hours or so, and trucks came in and they just started dropping poles in, because it wasn't just that pole, there were several poles down that street. And then, actually, probably three years after that, we had another storm that actually snapped a tree right across that line, the line in front of my, in front of 76, which puts more stress on it as well. It didn't, didn't come down and so forth. But the pole itself, when it first got put in there, I mean, it's been leaning like that for probably five, six years.
So it instantly leaned?
Oh, yeah, it was, yeah, because they were trying to get it up there, we lost the transformer, they put the transformer on.
You noticed the primary goes through a tree?
Right, oh, yeah.
It goes down that, you can see it, it's still...
Oh, absolutely. No, I know, 'cause I was out there with the electrician, with the guys from, not from Grid, but there was another outfit that was in there, 'cause it was so much loss. So I, you know, I would like to think that we take a look at it. I would actually think that if we did, you know, and obviously with the services with Verizon, Comcast, and so forth, even though they pay you a fee, you have to schedule with them to come out and move it.
And there's nothing on that pole right now, that double pole?
Right, none of the, yeah, I know. Yeah, no, I, yeah, no, I know. Yeah, no, but I'm just saying, I think in general, you gotta take the double pole out, and as much as people don't want to hear this, especially the Grid doesn't want to hear this, is to realign that pole and so forth and secure it appropriately in that area. I think you can put the pole on the other side, but it's, I think, the real issue is the fact that when it first got installed, and granted, at that time, the whole neighborhood was out, and we'd been out for probably 18 hours, and a bunch of trucks came in, pole trucks and so forth, put the poles in.
So it was an emergency repair that kind of became permanent?
Exactly, six years ago. Yep. Yep, that's how it was. And that's why, and that's why it got done the way it was done.
And understanding that neighborhood, that area is like one of the gems of this town, so, you know, trying to throw up additional poles is not, is gonna be hard to swallow, because, you know, that, it's just got a lot of character in that neighborhood.
Well, I've got a question, though. It seems unique that the, the reason why this pole leans is because of that perpendicular line coming toward the street, you know, so it's nice that the lines aren't out in front, especially along the Common, I guess that's probably...
Right, the road, that's why that's why it pulls.
Okay, yep. So, but then that line must serve two, two...
Yeah, Woodbridge, Woodbridge and Gratham.
Two groups of houses, right?
Right.
Might, you know, cost-effectiveness, I don't know, but is there any thought to burying those lines going, going down that way?
That would involve...
That would, that's huge, yeah. I actually talked to them six years ago when they were there. We were going through it, and I just said...
I'm sure the neighbors wouldn't care if they buried the line, then they wouldn't have wires running through their, their backyards.
Except the heavy, the heavy equipment and so forth, that would have to go through those yards. There's a pool back there, there's, so it's not, it's more than just, it's, ideally, in theory, it's a great idea. It's a matter of getting all the neighbors to sign up and to do the, to dig the trench and so forth, and the shrubbery there, people aren't gonna want to move their shrubbery, or they'll lose their shrubbery. It's not practical. It's gonna be expense, it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be an added expense, and it's not something that's probably gonna be done in short order. So this is probably, from the Grid's standpoint, this is probably the easiest way to go, but my feeling is, I think, if, basically, if you took that, took that line down for a period, for, you know, a few hours and just retrenched it and, and supported it, that would probably be a better, a better...
Adjust your comments to the Board here, so...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that, I think that would be...
We don't have what you have in front of you, so you're kinda gonna keep us included in what you're talking about.
Sure. No, I'm just thinking that the pole itself, take out the, take out, take out the older pole and readdressing, and redress that pole as far as like, basically putting it more, more support in the ground in that area.
I agree with you.
It is all sand down there, but there's bedrock below it and so forth, and you've got a grounding rod going down there as well.
Yeah, some perfectly transformed arms, something like that, yeah.
Right, right, there's a grounding rod going down there, so you should be able to get, get it down. I would think you'd be able to get enough support there, so it would be less of an issue, anyway.
Peter, do you want to come on up? Name, rank, serial number?
Peter LaFawn, 75 Green Street. And I'll just kind of reiterate what Dave said, but also for your benefit, and to perhaps, I don't think I'm gonna have to convince the Board tonight, but to bring back to your supervisors and, and tell them what citizens' feelings are, is, basically, I think it's what, it's a National Grid mistake, whether it be because it was put in haste, it wasn't properly engineered. I think the pole's fine, as is evidenced by the thousands of other straight poles that are around this town and every other town in the Commonwealth. Put in many fences, basketball courts, clotheslines, and I make sure they're straight, and if they lean over, I take them out and fix them and correct them and make them straight. Aesthetically, it looks terrible, I've got a picture here. That pole's, that double pole's been there for six years. It looks lousy. I didn't make enough for everybody, but you can pass... There you go. There's a... The second...
Give me a copy, please.
I'll give it to you after, Jeremiah. I don't have enough. The second one is of the tree, and you put in a second pole, you have, you're doubling the exposure of a car hitting it, a tree knocking it down, a wind or lightning hitting it, whatever. So you've got one, you've got one pole that, now you want to have three to serve the purpose of having one pole. This, besides looking like heck, I'm not a physicist or an engineer, but common sense tells me that when you string three poles together, the slack line, the poles bear primarily the weight of the lines. They're not tension. When they're in sequence, sure, I'm sure there's a little tension degree to it, but if a tree falls down between two poles, it's going to bring down one, maybe two, or if they're real tight, maybe ten in a row. You've all seen pictures of the domino effect of poles getting knocked down. So, you know, the engineering, I'm not going to speak to because I'm not an engineer, but there are thousands of single poles up there, so I don't think that, that weight of that line, you can use that as an excuse or an explanation to pull it down. If it was put in properly, deep enough, as the chairman said, or, I don't think it has to be much bigger. I just think it's, it's a matter of engineering incorrectly done and needs to be straightened out. As I said, you're doubling the exposure of a car hitting it or another tree knocking it down. You can see the tree on, I don't know whether it's the town's property or Mr. and Mrs. Medili's property, if that falls over, that could take the new wire that's going to go across that, that street down, as well as that pole and the, and the one next to it. So it's just, it's a poorly put together plan, and I think it needs to be really looked at properly and documented properly, which it hadn't been done.
Yeah, and again, from looking at this picture and the number of wires running from those poles, it would be just yet another wire, right, running across, guide wire running across it. It really does not look very attractive in, in this picture, really brings it to light.
I don't particularly pay attention to poles, but I came back from my PVD office today, and I think about one out of every ten poles is leaning on one fourteen, all the way from PVD to North Andover. And many of them are much more to a degree than that one is, and they're all standing quite fine. So I don't even think that it's really an issue of, of safety or coming down. I think if a tree came down on top of it, there's a question as to whether or not the nominal support that an extra guy wire, twenty-five feet above the road, connected to a pole maybe thirty-five feet above the road. I don't know what the physics of that is, but I don't think it's significant.
Part of the reason why this is, is the primary wire that you see going across the road to serve that backyard construction, we're installing tree wire to prevent tree issues. And the tree wire is heavier, it's more durable, and it's to prevent issues with trees, but because of that extra weight and added load, you need the step pole, because that pole is going to.
But wouldn't engineering, wouldn't a stronger pole put in a little bit deeper solve the problem?
You could put a, you'd have to put a larger pole and bigger diameter as well.
How much larger? Do you have any idea?
Probably a class, that's usually, I think it's about a class three, that's about.
I'd like to just see the documentation of that.
The other pole will be about this.
I seriously doubt that, to be honest with you. Prove it to me, let's, let's see. I don't have anything else.
Understood.
Do you want a couple pictures?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comment on the Green Street proposal, petition? Hearing none, any other input? Okay, I'll hear a motion to close the public hearing for this particular petition.
Move to close the public hearing for the Green Street and Middlesex, Green Street and Middlesex, Middlesex Street pole.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. Okay, do we have a motion?
Move unfavorable action.
We have a motion to deny the petition and a second. Any discussion on that? Do we want to provide some guidance to the engineer on what we, can we have you, ask you to come back and maybe do a little more research on this one and see, give us some alternatives for that?
This is to the standard, we have, obviously, the standards to what to build to, but obviously those standards, there's alternatives for those, and we can do that. We can set a pole deep, we can rake it out a little bit, we can do things, but this is just the standard, so, yep, that can be done.
They're worried about the way you put a steel pole in.
We couldn't put a steel pole, we could put a big fiberglass one, too.
Let's see what the alternatives are. So, okay, so we have a motion to deny, a second, all those in favor of that motion? Aye. Opposed? Okay, so that one is going to come back to us.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion to open the hearing for the joint pole petition for Great Pond Road. This is a Verizon National Grid joint pole petition for Great Pond Road, that's your motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, Rosemary, you're back on this one, right?
I am, thank you.
This is a joint pole petition for Verizon and National Grid for Great Pond Road.
Is it called a joint pole because Verizon and National Grid are in on it?
Correct, yep, that's correct.
But you're representing both tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, what they're going to be doing is they're going to be installing a, another pole. It's approximately about twenty-five feet, and this is going to be the riser pole. This is to, I believe, service pump station for the sewer department. And it's going to be going underground about approximately eighteen feet in the public taking, from there underground. It's a forty-five foot class three, that's going to be installed.
Okay, let's take a look at this one. So describe it again, so this is one, this one is going into service the pump station.
Yep. On Great Pond Road, right near the, there's a little bridge right there.
Sixty and sixty-five Great Pond Road.
So, the.
This is over by the other side of Butcher Boy.
Yeah, and so if you are driving down Great Pond Road, one thirty-three, like a chick wits on your right.
Correct.
Just before you get to, what's the name of that pond on the left?
Oh, yeah, I thought you were talking about the pond station.
Long Pond or something like that. Is that, is that, that's the area where you are talking right there?
Yes, there's Butcher Boy, that development.
Yep, so, but there's a, there's a little pumping station right there before the.
Correct.
There's like a pond on the left, you go over like a little bridge or something like that. Good Chickwick Book, is that?
Just prior to that, that bridge.
Okay. So on the left is that pumping station, and so is there an existing pole there now?
Yes, there's existing, and we'll be placing another.
So are you looking to take out the other one?
Uh, no, that one's going to stay.
Okay.
Yep, there won't be any double poles or anything like that. There's actually a transformer there, but we're moving that further down so that way we can service the new pole we're putting in with a riser on it, and then it's going underground from there.
Okay.
It's a riser pole to service the underground that's coming out of the pump station. Yep, underground, rising up to overhead.
There's actually no properties in that area.
Yep. No, I don't believe, not in that immediate general vicinity, no, there's not.
But there, there is a letter from one of our engineers in town with certain conditions that they'd like met. Have you, had, have you seen that?
No, I don't, no, I haven't seen that one on that job, from what I'm aware.
Should we read that?
Jennifer Hughes?
Yep. That's a conservation agent.
You want me to read it?
Non-engineer, yep.
This the one you're talking about?
I was actually talking about this one, too.
It's two different pieces of correspondence, right, so. I was going to meet both into the record.
Yep. Dick, if, which one?
So this, this, you can read the conservation one for us and then we'll read the.
An email from Jennifer to Joyce?
Yes.
Okay. This is an email written by the conservation administrator, Jennifer Hughes, to town clerk Joyce Bradshaw regarding the National Grid and Verizon pole petitions of March, for March twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen. Joyce, I do not have concerns about the Academy Road or Green Middlesex. I am assuming, and this is from a conservation perspective. I do not have concerns about Academy Road or Green Middlesex. I am assuming the Great Pond Road request is related to the construction of the new Ray's Pond Pump Station, there you go, it's Ray's Pond, that is going to be filled, I'm sorry, filed with the commission shortly. I've contacted the representative, representative for the Carlton Johnny Cake Project to see how much excavation will be done, as there are several wetlands located on those streets. I will get back to you as soon as I hear from the contact, Alec. Alec?
I was going to say, those two, those two are different. It's just the first sentence, yeah.
The first paragraph relates to the pole petitions.
All right.
The other information is for other matters.
So I can stop reading that?
Yeah. And the board should be aware that town meeting has approved through the capital improvement plan, a replacement of the Ray's Pump Station, Ray's Pond Pump Station. So this is an advance work of that.
Is there, is there a second letter?
So there was an, or what I thought was a set of conditions that were asked for by the Patrick Higgins, the staff engineer. It starts out recording, regarding petition one six-two-one-zero-one-seven-zero sixteen fifty-three, Great Pond Road, I would ask that National Grid be granted conditional approval to install and perform work in accordance with the request within the petition, so long as the following logistical issues are properly addressed. Conditions, a field installation of the proposed pole, UG primary electric line and pad-mounted transformer located as shown on the National Grid Exhibit A, petition sketched dated six twenty-five fourteen will be in compliance with the proposed sewer system improvements, contract two depicted on the Ray's Pond Pumping Station design plans prepared by Wooden and Current and labeled WC Project two-two-five-oh-seven on nineteen February two thousand and fifteen. Is this sounding familiar to you?
No, I wasn't briefed in any of that portion of it, no.
So we will forward you an email that came from our staff engineer, that the work is being done in advance of an upgrade to the pump station, a replacement of the pump station. So we'll provide you with the conditions. They really are making sure that your work is consistent with the work being outlined by our engineers.
Okay.
At that site.
Yeah, there were six, there were six conditions in total, I only read the first one. So we should, you should really have a chance to review those before we make any, because you would have to agree to those conditions before we can make any kind of, I think, before we can make any kind of a conditional approval. Are we on any type of kind, time constraints with this?
Well, there's, there's two ways to do this. One would be you approve it with these conditions, and if for some reason they're unsatisfactory to you, then you would have to come back and reapply.
Okay.
But most of the conditions, quite frankly, are ones that you would expect since we're the ones requesting the work, because it relates to the Ray's Pond Pump Station. But the alternative would be to delay the public hearing, have you review those, and then come back at a subsequent meeting.
Okay.
Well, my concern is, is would it hold up any other work being done on Ray's?
No.
No?
No, not, not within that timeframe, but.
On that email, Mr. Gordon, it was Jen Hughes?
No, no, no. The email is from Patrick Higgins, who has staff engineer out of our engineering department.
Okay, and they have a contact to get ahold of some of it, or would you like, Mike, I can provide my contact if you like.
It's Patrick Higgins, and I will forward to you, to your email, this email which identifies the conditions.
Perfect, okay, thank you very much.
So would you prefer that you move forward with a decision by the board based on the conditions?
I, I couldn't make an answer on that one. I actually was not the engineer, I work with the gentleman that actually is the engineer in this project.
And everybody else against this comment, my frustration with utility, quite frankly, it was funny we said in the office today, was the poor guy who's going to show up tonight is going to have nothing to do with the project. And that happens every time. Sending, with no disrespect to you.
I understand.
We can't send people who don't do the work that we're expecting to meetings, because all that happens is, we slow ourselves down and we don't get the appropriate response, because you're, you're a qualified person, but you, you don't know about this project. So maybe the staff person who was working on this project got this email, and be able to answer the questions of whether or not this was satisfactory. So from my perspective, whoever is doing the failed work has to start showing up to the meetings. Whether it's a cost issue or not, I don't know, but it doesn't make much sense for some person to do the work and an alternative person to show up to try to defend the decision of the first person. It's, it's not even, it's not good business practice, it's not logical, there's no economics in it. So that's what becomes difficult, because my guess is that we're not alone in saying this. And so now the board, I mean, the board can take no action, that's fine, you'd have to come back. But it's just a recommendation going forward that it, that at least the staff engineer have some kind of input beyond just submitting the applications.
Yeah, no, I understand.
So our engineer has reviewed it, has come up with a set of conditions, how does the board want to proceed? Do we want to make a, well, first of all, I guess we need to close the public hearing before we even do that. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this particular petition? This is the Great Pond Road pole placement? Okay, seeing no one. I'll hear a motion to close the public hearing? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, the public hearing is now closed, so we can make a motion to, for this petition? What's that? We have to have a motion first. Oh, did I have, I voted on it. What are you talking about?
I think we took a vote.
We did.
Moved to a second, but didn't take a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't do that? All right, well, I'd like to take call vote, are all in favor of closing the public hearing?
Before you vote, if your plan is to have them back, then continue the hearing, don't close the hearing.
Yeah, that's true.
If, if your plan is to vote it with the conditions, close the hearing vote conditions. But if your plan is to extend it and have them come back after they review the conditions, just continue the public hearing and don't close.
How do we know that plan until we made a motion?
Yes. It's the power of the chair. You've got to decide whether or not you think it's, it's better to close and approve with conditions and, and in essence, make them to come back.
Motion has been withdrawn, a second, withdrawn, I suppose, okay. So, all right, let's have a motion then. Why don't we continue the hearing, have a chance to review the email, let us know if you can meet those conditions, and then we'll, we'll continue the hearing at our next meeting. Okay, so do I have a motion to continue?
Why don't we just continue?
We need the.
I'll leave it here.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, continue the hearing?
Aye.
Okay, so the hearing's still open, we'll continue it until the next meeting. We'll forward that email to you and have you have a chance to review that and respond to those conditions.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, thank you. Oh, that was tougher than I thought.
Sorry.
Okay. All right, one more to go. So I have a motion to open a, a petition for one forty Academy Road. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do we now have a petition in front of us for a, a pole on one forty Academy Road?
What this is for is there is overhead pole line that serves this house currently, and the owner would like to go with an underground service. And of that, fifty feet would be in the public way. And that would also be a riser service to come down from overhead to underground and then go underground fifty feet onto their property.
The difference would be that there would be, it's not a pole placement, it's just really taking the service and.
Correct, it's just putting a, a steel tube on it and then running their underground service up to it. And they'll be able to take down their overhead pole line that's currently on their property.
It's the fact that they're in the public way requires that.
Yes, fifty feet of that is within the public way. There's a cemetery right next to it. And it's on the same side.
That's a nice service. What, is that something that National Grid would do for anybody, any customers or?
Um, well, it depends.
The customer pays for it?
Yeah.
Customer pay, yeah, I know, I'm with that.
The customer does pay for it because we will provide an overhead service. But if it is underground, you know, we could serve them both ways. It is least cost to serve. The underground, as we know, is more aesthetically pleasing, so that is why that they would have to pay for that.
What's the cost a foot, or how do you?
Oof, that was my pre, previous job. I believe it's about twenty-three dollars a foot for underground.
Yeah.
Roughly, give or take, I mean, I haven't done that job in a year or so, so, but.
Can get expensive, that's a bother.
Wendy Wakeman, one forty Academy Road.
Yep, this is your job right here.
That's, that's.
Let me just, are you all set with what you want to present at this point? Okay.
We're on the same page.
Okay, well, I just wanted to curious.
That's the cost for those guys, and then we also are, we dig the trench.
Yeah.
The service currently comes back from Stevens Street across those nineteen thirties technology poles that are quite swingy and the line's a little too close to the ground. The house only has hundred amp service, which is kind of crazy, given the size of the house. The only way to get more service is to come in through the front. What this does is it sinks the line at the edge of Academy Road and where the pole is. If you're familiar with Academy Road, we don't own all of that grass up to our fence, so that's the part of the townland that it's going across. It's not going across the town roadway, it's going under the grass, then it's cutting through the driveway.
The pole's on the same side as our home.
What's that?
The pole's on the same side as our home.
But it's going to travel under a public way, and that's why we're here tonight.
Yeah, it's a little confusing, it says public way, and what that public way is, is what these guys think of as sidewalk in front of my house, right? The grass. We do mow it.
Thank you.
Because the town does not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
But it's part of, it's not a part of property, right? Okay, any other public comment? Okay, I'll hear a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do we have a motion for this petition?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, we got one out of three all set.
I apologize for descriptions with Green Street, just trying to explain it and stuff, you know, it gets a little, but.
We'll see you back.
Thank you very much.
Before you go, though, because I've brought this up several times before, National Grid, and I actually, and shame on me for not sticking to my guns, that I said I was not going to vote for any more pole petitions until they fixed what, or give us a good reason why it[1541.56] shouldn't be fixed. The property owner has asked for this. It's a pole that's near 60 Middlesex Street, and it is leaning like this over somebody's garage. And it's been like that for a long time. Over their home and their garage, we keep bringing it up to them, and they say, oh, well, we're not dealing with that, or that's another company. You know, I think some of my colleagues had said very eloquently, and you can't just be doing these halfway jobs all over. It, it's ugly, it looks like heck, and we get complaints. We get complaints, but really, somebody needs to take a look. It's, when you're coming from the library, heading down Middlesex Street, it is before number 60. You can't miss it.
Yeah, because there's another one I was working on, too.
But it's not that one.
At 110, 113, yeah.
It's not that one. You cannot miss, I don't know how they could go down there and look at any other pole and not look at that.
This is number 60, Middlesex Street?
It's before number 60.
Before number 60, okay. You don't happen to have a pole number, do you?
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, no problem at all.
But I think the message clearly needs to go back that you just can't be doing these, slap them up and, and, I mean, you see stumps that are like floating and not tied into anything and for years?
Fire alarm, actually, that's usually what happens. They cut it, and then we can't touch the fire alarm.
It's got to get fixed.
Yeah.
It's got to get fixed.
Understood, yeah, I agree.
Well, if we can get an answer on that one, too, that would be great.
Yes, definitely. We'll have that for the next.
Sounds like it's a public nuisance. Okay. Okay, so we're still in meeting here, so Mr. LaFawn, Mr. LaFawn, we're still in meeting here, so if you want to take it outside, you can do that. Okay, we have no old business, no new business. Public comment?
I have some public comments.
Well, the public's just left.
Good, that's what I was waiting for.
All right, so we'll allow...
I have some public comments. I just want to say a few things, tonight being my last meeting as, as a member of the Board of Selectmen. It truly is an honor to be a selectman, and I have enjoyed my six years as a selectman. So I want to say, first of all, thank you to the citizens of North Andover for giving me the opportunity to serve. As I said, it's been a pleasure, and, you know, 90% of it is awesome, there's 10%, you know, sometimes, but that's, that's why we do what we do, to deal with the hard issues and that sort of thing. But, you know, I very much enjoyed it. I think everyone should, you know, at some point, think about running for a selectman because it's really a good thing, and, you know, it's, it's, it's good to serve your town, so. I also want to thank, now certainly there are a lot of town employees that I've interacted with during the last six years, so I'm not going to mention them all, but I do appreciate everyone, but Ray, thank you, you know, Adele Johnson, Lori Berzloff, Karen Robinson, Lynn Savage, Kathy Darby, Joyce Bradshaw, and the entire town clerk's staff, thank you very much. Certainly Chief Gallagher and Chief Melnikus, Bruce Thibodeau, Rick Gorman, and everyone else that works for the town that I've come in contact with, certainly, thank you very much for supporting me and doing a great job. We do truly have such a professional-run organization, so thank you. Also, to Mark Reese and Andrew Mailer, thank you very much, especially early on, Mark Reese showing me the ropes of town government. Thank you for all the guidance that you've given me during the years. I also want to assure the, the American, I was going to say American people, then, you know, people of North Andover, that the town is in very good hands. Andrew does a great job as our town manager. He's visionary, a true professional, and I want to say, you know, it's been a pleasure working with you. Thank you very much. To the current board of selectmen, Dawn and Rosemary, Tracy and Dick, you guys are awesome. You know, I think we've said it before, we don't always agree on everything, but, you know, I truly feel that we've done a lot of good things in the last six years. We, you know, you know, as a team, and it really has been enjoyable working with you guys. So, you know, the communication that we all have and the ability to work with the other committees and boards and that sort of thing, I think, you know, as Andrew with our, as our town manager, I think with you guys sticking around a little bit longer, the town's in good shape, so thank you very much, and it's been a pleasure working with you. What else? I also want to thank the school committee, the finance committee, and all the boards and committees that I've had a chance to work with, so thank you very much. My dad, he was pointed out tonight, former town manager, former school committee member, former finance committee member, pretty much any board that they would let him do, he would, he would do, so certainly I'm very proud of my father and, you know, as far as setting a role model and an example of getting involved in your community, I certainly appreciate that. And even if I didn't ask for it, he had a lot of advice for me the last six years, so, and he would always say, the Board of Selectmen, those guys don't know what they're doing, and they're like, I'm not one of them, so.
I mentioned that.
Yeah.
You were good up until that point.
They never know what they're doing, and then, Dan, I'm one of them, oh, yeah, well, yeah, anyway.
Speaking like a town manager.
Yeah. So also, but, you know, last but not least, and I didn't do this at the beginning because my family was here, but I might have gotten emotional if I did this, but certainly my family, my wife, Erin, if anybody knows us, they all know that she's the brains of the operation, so, you know, I couldn't do without her support and my kids, and so I love them very much, and thank you very much, and we'll see you later.
Thanks.
So there you go, and thank you for all your nice, kind words earlier.
Wow, hard to follow that. We do have two other agenda. Any other public comment?
Who's going to read all the motions?
I know.
Ask me another town clerk, maybe someone get elected that can do it or something like that.
So do we have anything for ask the manager tonight?
We do. We, we would have thought up something if we didn't, given that, Bill, this was Bill's good idea. Let me first comment that it's, it's been a pleasure from my perspective. It's, you know, my three and a third years I've along, you've been here from the beginning and provided for me sanity and stability as the rest of the board does, a love for your community, and so it's, you've made it easy, which is, which is great. All of you guys do, but certainly Bill is...
That's about me, not them.
Yeah, but sure, you'll get your moments, no. And it's been great. It's, your commitment to your family resonates with me, and I very much appreciate the support you've shown me during the time here, so. With that, we'll have an ask the manager question, and that will be, Phil will be familiar with the question. The question is, do we currently provide funding to the MBTA and to the MVRTA, and how does that work? Well, we currently provide, we get a cherry sheet charge for approximately $72,000 for the MBTA. So although we don't have a commuter rail stop in town, or we don't have direct bus service provided by the MBTA, all community serviced in any way by the MBTA, in other words, if our residents go to MBTA stations or bus lines, we get a charge based upon some calculation that the state puts together. I wish I could go into depth as to what that calculation is, but I, but I, but I can't do so intelligently. We also get a charge from the MVRTA, Merrimack Valley Transit, the Regional Transit Authority, that's in the amount of $113,000 in fiscal '14. And in essence, that's not a direct charge to the service they provide, it's, again, a calculation of population and other costs associated with the Transit Authority. So one of the reasons we're able to not have an additional charge to have the commuter bus to Boston is that, in essence, the charge we pay for the MVRTA is more than the service we receive, and so it works off that service fee. Doesn't mean we still can't, you know, don't have to charge residents some fee for the transportation, but in essence, there's not a supplemental charge. And so while we continue to have this, in essence, surplus to our bill, we'll continue to look for ways that we can provide transportation benefits to our residents while we're working off this charge from the MVRTA. And interesting enough, when you're done sort of working off that $113,000, if there are additional costs, that actually gets subtracted from the MBTA charge you have. And so it's a little bit of an interesting formula, and I know as folks who've had some difficulty with transportation into Boston in particular, we'll continue to try to find low-cost alternatives that help residents. So if I had longer, I could get into the bowels of the calculation, but I, but I figure that, that covers it pretty much.
Thank you.
And giving that a reminder that the inaugural trip into Boston is April 6th.
Yes, it is. Great segue, yep.
Which will be different.
It should be a lot of fun.
Will that be an MVRTA bus or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it'll be an MVRTA bus. So, so the balance of that question was, if we were ever able to add transportation, whether that's a commuter rail or some other additional MBTA transportation, we would expect our assessment would increase. The question would be how much and what the offsetting income would be generated by having that kind of resource in the community.
That's a quality of life issue thing, though. Sometimes even if we have to pay, that, I used to always argue that we were overpaying, that we could have our citizens limousined into Boston for what our fee was, but I really do support that bus because that is a quality of life issue for our residents, and our kids going to school in Boston or...
Just one bus a day?
Right now, we're going to check, the plan is one bus a day, and it'll really be driven, excuse the pun, by the amount of interest. If there's interest for two or three or four buses, we'll, we'll add to the service.
If you miss your bus home, you're stuck in Boston.
Yeah, we continue to develop a plan to do that.
That could be a sleeper thing if we don't, and that, probably in our tax newsletter would be a good place to do it.
Yeah, we have a few different avenues that are being pursued by Lori and Eric currently to make sure that we're communicating out there with the public.
There seems to be some new surveys going out and about. Is that the new Community Economic Development Directors? With the schools, there was some sort of, through the school email, as far as amenities that you're looking for downtown, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, we've done, out of the Community Development Department, with our Merrimack Fellow, our Community Engagement Fellow, has been putting together surveys to get some responses back on certain community concerns, community interests. So that was another one of those surveys. We, we see ourselves using more often something like Survey Monkey, sorry to push one particular product, but something pretty simple to get feedback. We received a lot of feedback on the commuter bus. We received, I know Mark DeSalvo received pretty aggressive feedback on the survey about town meeting. So when we can reach, we're up to 1,100 Twitter followers and an ability to communicate with all of our residents, so we can get back 1,000 or 1,500, 2,000 responses to a survey pretty quick. It's a good way for us to communicate with residents and get their responses or feelings about certain services we have in town.
Actually, more than we get at a town meeting.
A little more than 1%.